Good afternoon. It's 5:03, Tuesday, June 13th. Special City Council Workshop. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, you want to do roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Bogosian?
Here.
Councilmember Pahn?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a call?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Ms. Teri Hack?
Good evening. My name is Teri Hack, and I'm representing Wild Dunes LLC. Thank you for your continued work on the proposed noise ordinance and the many other important issues facing the community. As you are aware, the resort has been working diligently to mitigate the noise that may impact nearby homes and conducted a base sound study in February. The second sound study is currently taking place. However, the rain and thunderstorms the past couple of days have not helped. The weather and the raining weather is compelling us to conduct yet another study the weekend of June 24th. While costly, it's the only way to ensure the data is accurate. This current study and the next will provide readings that are typical of the summer season, large groups, and a social wedding on the 24th. We will provide you with an executive summary of the study, which will prove vital in determining whether the 75 decibel is arbitrary number or is appropriate noise level for groups and social activities. Passing the noise ordinance prior to receiving the executive summary is premature. Wild Dunes agrees with the IOP Public Safety Committee in asking you to delay any action until the resort's study is completed and also agrees with hiring an outside municipal sound consultant. I recognize that this has been on the agenda for many months, but encourage you to wait until the studies are completed and the summaries are presented so that realistic measurements may be assigned. Without real data, the current conditions, there could be unintentional consequences from this ordinance. I encourage you to use all available data to find the best solution, not the quickest. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri.
Mr. Klaus?
Al Klaus, Three Grand Pavilion. Waiting for written assurances regarding enforcement of 925, the noise ordinance regarding amplified music. We still have not received anything from the council. Requesting Mrs. Anderson to recuse herself from all issues regarding the noise ordinance as it relates to the resort, Wild Dunes, and the city. Requesting an opinion from the South Carolina Attorney General's Office regarding her situation. Respectfully regarding two inaccurate statements by Mrs. Hack, in a previous council meeting, she stated, "We designed and built in 1999." Subsequently, in a later council meeting, stated, "We designed and built in 2020." Attached is our IOP Certificate of Occupancy dated 12/31/2018. What does it matter when we build our home in a residential area? What's the difference? Regarding the letter from, regarding a letter from Mr. Jack Smith of Nelson Mullins, the legal counsel for the resort, dated May the 8th of '23, which I have possession as a result of Freedom of Information Act, there are a number of inaccurate statements made by Mr. Smith. They are as follows. One, quote, "There appears to be one individual who has had multiple interactions with the police, the 9/11 service, and with Wild Dunes concerning allegations of noise violations. Our response, emails reflect several who have had interactions. I have a well-documented history dialing 886-6522 per the direction of Lieutenant Robert Foresight in 2021, never ever using the 9/11 service." Number two, quote, "Unfortunately, our efforts to involve this individual in conversation or to find time to speak and try to understand one another better have been rebuffed." Now, I am here to tell you, I cannot give you the name of this individual, but his initials are Al Klaus. Response, "Prior to Mr. Smith's letter, we met with Mrs. Hack twice. We conditioned a third meeting predicated on receiving certain criteria from Mrs. Hack. She did not totally meet our conditions. However, we did meet with her on June 6th of '23. June of '22, we initiated a dialogue with Mr. Smith comprised of a phone call and various emails. Finally, Mr. Smith agreed to meet with us at the resort to hear the situation firsthand," unquote. Identifying, quote, "After the 4th and will aim for that Wednesday or Thursday afternoon." Subsequently, Mr. Smith ghosted us and never responded to us.
Mr. Klaus?
Mr. Klaus, you can wrap up your comments if you'd like. I mean, it's like a 15, 20-second warning.
Thank you. Very good. Apologize. I've already used up my time, Mayor. Number three, quote, "We would seek to work with the city and closely cooperate to make sure that we are in compliance with the ordinance." Our response, they did not care about the above in '21 and in '22. It was not necessary because the city did not enforce the ordinance, which has resulted into a nuisance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laura Lovins?
Good evening. Laura Lovins, Five Links Clubhouse Court. I'm here tonight to open a conversation between the community and council regarding septic tanks on IOP and their possible impact to the environment of the island. This is a conversation that has started in many coastal communities, and it's a very important topic. I want to be really clear. I am not here tonight to say that current septic tank owners need to switch to the city sewer system. That's not why I'm here. We know that the water table is rising. We know that the temperature of our ocean water is rising. We know that there are more frequent named storms and higher rainfall amounts. I don't know if any of you were to the beach area between 46th Street and 53rd Street on May 19th, or again on Monday, June the 5th. On both occasions, that stretch of beach had been cut into three lakes with water over 17 inches deep. The area in front of the citadel had standing water almost up to the high tide line, and in both of those days, the kids were using boogie boards to play in the lake. None of those were due to named storms. The storm on May 19th, there was a storm, and there was a storm surge that night that caused the superflooding on the 19th. And then the water event on June the 5th, it was due to a king tide the night prior. In both cases, it took almost a week for the water to absorb into the ground. And if, I realize it's a big if, but if there had been a faulty septic tank issue in any of the homes along 46th to 53rd, there could have been a very bad environmental accident. DEHEC says that a septic system that is in good working order will pose no threat or problem to the community, and that is exactly my question to the community and to council. What do we know about the septic systems throughout IOP? Does the homeowner and with the septic system have it checked regularly to make sure it is in proper working order? Has the horizontal and vertical separation of the septic tank been checked and updated to make sure it's still in a safe location? Groundwater is often overlooked in discussions of sea level rise and coastal flooding, but it is becoming increasingly clear that it is a critical discussion that we as a community need to address. I'm urging council to begin to address this issue as it relates to our community's large septic system and make it a leading part of the environmental agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Santiago?
Tony Santiago, 60 Ocean Point. First of all, I want to thank everybody for putting together the Des Moines Administration Council on the Day of SDRs. I think that's extremely important to have good data and make good policy. I'll talk about that a little bit more. One of the things that I would ask you to do is, we had a discussion here in late, almost December, I think, I wanted to meet with efforts Patrick spoke regarding the representation of second homeowners here on the island that do not have SDRs. We're continuing to represent them as investment owners, which clearly they're not. They're second homeowners who choose not to rent, and they should be communicated that way from now on because it's misleading to say the least. I own a second home in Charleston. I don't rent. I'm certainly not an investor. It is my personal second home, and I'm 86% like everybody else. So if we can clean that up, I think that would be very helpful for everyone. Additionally, I think data is critical. I've said this to you before, that we need traffic data, much better traffic data, so we can make better policy decisions again, just like we do with SDR. Three locations I've asked to have permanent traffic counters put in. Ideally, the city controls it, IOP, not some other jurisdiction which sometimes we just don't work when they want to have those counters work. Sometimes they do work more actively. Those locations would be the connector again. It would also be selling as IOP, and it would be 41st and Palm to the resort. I think then we have a sense of what's really going on in the island on a permanent basis. I think that's critical. Lastly, I want to encourage everybody to continue to support enforcement. I think it is a critical issue. Enforcement of parking, enforcement of SDR violations. I am still kind of confused about SDR violations, processes, and systems, so I'm going to reach out to you to get clarification. I want to communicate this to the residents in a way that they know how to do it appropriately so that we really get true enforcement there. And lastly, I think enforcement eventually here to put some guardrails on SDRs is critical. We've talked about it. Looking for solutions, I put an article out, you'll see it in Islander, with ideas on some of these topics, and really wanting everybody to give the council ideas. It's enough. I'm complaining, but we need to have solutions now. We need to pivot. So that's it. Thank you for everything.
That's all.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next item is special presentations. We've got two representatives from our coastal engineering group, coastal science and engineering, Stephen Trainum and Patrick Barado. Thank you both for coming. This is tying to item 6B1 on the erosion down at the Breach Inlet side. So Stephen, we'll let you take it away. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I'm happy to be here, and I understand you all have a full agenda, so we'll try to keep this pretty quick.
Stephen, just make sure, you want to pull that mic up a little bit? There you go.
So we're here to discuss some recent erosion that's occurred at Breach Inlet. This kind of dates back to a little bit earlier in the year, but over the past two weeks, we've really had some more high tides that have been discussed a minute ago, and some erosion events occurring, especially right at the corner of Breach Inlet. Fortunately, it is a fairly isolated area, but discuss that, discuss what the city's options are if they are looking to the city or homeowner's options, looking to do anything to mitigate some of the erosion occurring. I will scroll back to look at, this is the very southern end of the island at Breach Inlet. We've highlighted three years, three separate years of photographs to show how conditions have come and gone. And just to highlight that anywhere near an inlet, the state designates as unstable inlet zone. So this area, the state has designated as unstable inlet zone because beaches near inlets are known to change because of changes in the inlet deltas. As the deltas evolve and move and shift around, shoals change positions, and that can cause isolated erosion events or accretion events to occur, and oftentimes that's completely separate from whether the larger beach system is gaining sand or losing sand. An area can be gaining sand, but still the beach can be eroding landward because of changes in the inlets. And we think that's what's going on here because overall, there is a positive sand supply moving into this area. You can see in the top-left image, that's 2019. We've highlighted one walkover to show that at that time, the beach was fairly eroded. There had been an event prior to that. This area, just east of here, was heavily impacted by Hurricanes Irma and Matthew, and we did some scraping projects to rebuild the dune along much of the Breach Inlet reach going up to about 7th Avenue.
When is that picture in '23?
This was taken last week.
Last week. Yeah. Are these all at the same tide?
No, they're not at the same tide. So the one at the top-left was likely at a much higher tide. Bottom-left was a low-tide picture, and it looks like the right one was about a mid-tide. So certainly, the water level is kind of independent. We're looking at where the wet sand line and the vegetation line is, is really kind of the indication of what the condition is. But in 2021, you can see it was a much healthier condition. We had some accretion occurring in this area, but by now in 2023, it's obviously eroded back again to a little worse than the 2019 condition. Similar view, looking at the other angle, 2019 in the top-left and 2023 in the bottom-right. Again, you can see on the left picture that there is more of a stable, or there is some dry sand or kind of modestly dry sand that shows there's more sand in the system, and the profile was actually a little healthier than it looks. We may have had an event that set the dune back. The water goes back out over a period of a couple of weeks. The sand dries out, starts to rebuild the dune. And we're actually seeing that as you go further up coast, even today, we were just out there a few minutes ago, there's already some dune recovery occurring kind of north of 3rd Avenue. It's really the area south of 3rd Avenue that we haven't seen any recovery occurring yet, and that they're still heavily impacted. I will jump back. The good news is, there's still a lot of dune area between structures, the majority of the houses and the high tide line. Now, there are some pools that are getting fairly close. I think there's maybe two lots where the pools are within about 20 feet of the high tide line, and that 20-foot is critical because that's what the state considers an emergency condition, is when the high tide line's within 20-foot of a structure, and they include a pool or a golf course in that. Looking at the delta, and this is, again, we're talking about changes occurring in inlets, and oftentimes, it's very hard to say, you know, cause and effect precisely when you have such large-scale changes occurring in these deltas. But we do monitor the delta of Breach Inlet every year for the city, and we can kind of see how the shoals are shifting more towards Sullivan's Island, which is a completely natural process. Every several years, we get a break in the shoal, and you can kind of see that in the center image. I don't have a laser pointer to show, but in that center image, you can see that our channel right here, that's a new channel that formed between 2019 and 2021, and kind of starts the cycle over again. The same thing happens to a much larger scale of the east end of the island. We call these, you know, channel evolutions, events, and shoal bypasses. So this is occurring at Breach, and as that new channel starts migrating towards Sullivan's Island, it can draw sand off of Breach Inlet. There's also some smaller features that we've highlighted where there's a deeper hole forming right next to the beach. We call that a marginal flood channel. That's expanded over the past couple of years, which could also be contributing to the erosion, especially with this northeast weather event that we had. It can kind of funnel water right through that channel, which can draw sand off the beach. So right now, that very tip of the island has these forces kind of working against it, which is probably causing a lot of the erosion. Just a vertical image to kind of compare where we were in 2021 to where we are in 2023, and...
So what's the lines you have on that?
So the lines we have on that are the state OCRM baseline and setback line. So that's the state jurisdictional lines, and that'll tie into something we'll talk about here in just a second. But you can obviously see a loss at the dry sand beach, which, again, can kind of be a little tricky depending on what tide you look at the photos and the recent weather conditions are. But you can also see a landward movement of the low-tide line. Both these images were low-tide images. If you look at the bottom of the screen, there's obviously some sand that has been lost at that low-tide area. So it's just one of the unfortunate parts about living and trying to manage a beach around an inlet. So to discuss some potential causes and some potential options, one thing we have been tracking is, you know, the sand supply to the inlet. We've been tracking sand moving from the 2018 project area in Wild Dunes, and you can see in Reach 5 and Reach 6, the volumes have been going down. That's the project area. And Reach is 3 and 4, which is the beach north of the pier, volumes have been going up. The sand has been moving down. And in Reach 2, which is the area from about probably 4th Avenue to the pier, volumes have been fairly stable. They've been lowering a little bit, but starting to come up this past year. But Reach 1, which is the area right at the tip, really took a hit this past year from 2022 to, I'm sorry, 2021 to '22 when we last measured it. We're getting ready to do our next survey, so we'll be able to update these tables. But really, the thing to notice here is, as these are going up, that sand moving from the north of the island to the south of the island, which is, you know, your nourishment projects have been feeding the entire island. But these changes and these scales that we're seeing aren't related to this bigger, you know, island sediment transport. It's the localized effects of the inlet. Another question that I know kind of came up was when we did these scraping projects several years ago after the storm. Could that have caused problems, you know, now, five years later? And really, it's not possible that that happened. The scales that we were looking at is, we moved about four cubic yards per foot of beach, meaning for every linear foot of beach, it was about four yards that we shifted from the low-tide up to the high tide. The scales have changed. We see year-to-year on any of these stations can be 20 to 30 cubic yards per foot, and so over five years, we're seeing, you know, really significant changes coming and going. So that little bit really was a natural kind of shifting it back up into the dune, replacing what the storm had taken.
I just want to understand this a little bit. Understand that the renourishment that we did in Wild Dunes is always...
The renourishment that was known in Wild Dunes was always thought, and I've heard you guys say before, that it's migrating down the island, and it's accretive to the rest of the island, including what I thought I'd heard before was even the area now that we're seeing this erosion occur. So is that, is now that sand from the Wild Dunes now going and building up on Sullivan's Island? Is that what we're seeing, and it's bypassing the end of the island?
So the sand's going to bypass naturally regardless of whether it was nourishment sand or the native beach sand. The waves are always going to be trying to move sand from Ala Palms to Sullivan's. By nourishing, you're providing a source where it's not eroding it from your upland area and eroding it into your houses and taking that sand. We're kind of providing a bank for it to take while you're still maintaining the healthy beach along the center and north part of the island. So again, I think there's plenty of sand coming to Breach Inlet, and some of it's going to be bypassing to Sullivan's Island, just like you get sand bypassing from Dewey's Island to your north. So that's kind of the natural flow, but you can still have a positive sand budget and localized erosion around these inlets because of the way the currents and the waves work.
Okay.
So Reach 5 and 6 are where?
Those are the Wild Dunes areas, the front beach of Wild Dunes.
Oh, those are all the way up? Oh, okay. So it's not, it doesn't go...
It's reverse.
The way I would expect it to.
Yeah, it's south to north there. We do a better job in our reports of detail. And this just shows you the Reach 1, again, that corner of Breach Inlet, how year-to-year the volume change is very dynamic. It's not a consistent pattern of accretion, even though historically, that area has accreted, and that's why homes were able to be built seaward of the road that was developed. But over the past 10 to 15 years, it's been negative, and we have been losing some sand from that area. But there's no real rhyme or reason on, you know, the total volume, and that's because it's controlled by the end dynamics. So looking at what options, you know, owners of the city have right now, there's kind of two approaches. One is, if there is an emergency condition, then owners or the city, if it's a significant enough area, can apply for emergency permit to either scrape sand, to bring in sand from upland via truck, or to install emergency sandbags to protect their property. Right now, we feel like there's probably two lots that may qualify for that, and they're not adjacent to each other, and I can't tell you exactly what addresses those are right now. But the other option is a general permit measure that can be undertaken anytime. It doesn't have to meet that general, or that emergency condition, and that you can bring trucked-in sand to try to rebuild the dune. And you can also do sand fencing. If there is a stable beach and you're not eroding, sand fencing can kind of help jump-start the dune building process.
Which permit did we submit?
The general permit.
That's what I thought. Yeah, so the city has submitted an application for a general permit that would allow y'all to bring in trucked sand. It has to be beach-compatible, and it's up to the city on whether you want to, you know, do that or not.
What sort of timeline would that be in terms of, when you start the permitting process? How long would it normally take to get approval on that?
That one's a fairly simple one. It does require a 15-day public notice period. So once that is done, assuming there aren't any significant objections to it, then it's another maybe week after that that you actually get the permit.
And you've already done that as well, right?
Yes, the public comment period ends June 21st.
And how is that being paid for?
Well, the permit we developed at the staff level, we need to have a conversation with city council about who covers the cost of the actual construction. CSC has pulled a couple of cost estimates depending on the width of the dune that needs to be restored, and those estimates are about $200,000 or $300,000.
Total, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll go into a couple of other things to discuss real quick. One of the questions that I know arose last week, we were meeting with some owners, is the idea of possibly adjusting the city's ordinance on prohibiting additional structures in the area 250 feet landward of the setback line. And forgive me if I have that language a little off, but this map shows that setback line and baseline, so anywhere landward of that blue line is outside of OCRM's jurisdiction. Now, I will caveat that and back up a little bit to say that where the wet beach has eroded landward of that line, so this area right here, OCRM can also claim jurisdiction over that area. The areas of upland landward of that point are supposedly outside of OCRM's jurisdiction, though I know some people will argue that technically that is still the beach system, and it can get litigated. Right now, the city has an ordinance that would prohibit owners building seawalls in that area. The state has a state policy that they don't want any seawalls built on the coast because they negatively impact the beach system. So the area between that setback line and the oceanfront structures is kind of a loophole, kind of a gray area, that if the city didn't have that, an individual owner could put in a seawall. In our opinion, seawalls are very good at protecting an upland private property if done in a kind of comprehensive plan where all properties... done in a kind of comprehensive plan where all properties are included and protected and is built to a design that, you know, can withstand storms. But in reality, in situations like this, that's not likely to happen. It's one person puts in a seawall, the neighbor doesn't, and if that seawall ever becomes exposed, it immediately starts getting flanked. It jeopardize, it can cause additional erosion to the neighbors and it can also impact the public use of the beach. So in our opinion, if we're looking at kind of a holistic approach for the city, we do think that the ordinance says it is, is a good idea. The taking it out and allowing owners to build individual seawalls can create a lot of problems down the road should erosion continue. Again, they do work well for protecting the upland, but other options owners have are the sandbags. It's kind of the, sandbags are the largest or most significant action that we think offers very good protection in temporary cases or temporary circumstances, which brings me to kind of my final point on where we're at here. The Corps is looking at doing a beneficial use project, dredging sand out of the spoil islands along breach inlet. The ones you drive over the connector and you see that nice beautiful sand, they're actually trying to use that sand to do a beneficial use project. It would increase the capacity of those islands for future dredging, but it could also benefit the beach. So this is a project that we're, the Corps came to us recently to get our opinion on. We thought it was a great idea. We talked to Desiree about supporting it. It would be 100% paid for by the Corps in its base level and they could potentially add a couple of hundred thousand cubic yards to that area of sand. So that could be a very good project and they're hoping it could be done this calendar year or early in 2024. So really, if we can get, if we can buy enough time to get that project put in place, then I think this area will have a lot of restoration coming very soon.
And Stephen, what's the likelihood of that happening?
Very good, I think. They're about a 65% design level now. They have funding identified for it. The city's role really would be just as a support for them, but there may be some actions that the city could take to help the project do a little better job in getting the beach to look like you want it. Right now, they're proposing to just kind of place some material out on the wet sand area because of logistics work for this material. So you may want to move some of that sand up to the dune and that would be a cost to the city, but it'd be very, in retrospect to the cost of the project in general, a very minor cost.
So Stephen... How are you getting, you're talking about Little Goat Island, right?
Yes.
Is one of them. How's sand getting from point A to point B if we go down this path?
It would be pumped via dredge and a line through the waterway.
So not having to truck it in like the other, one of the other options is and that creates...
Trucking is a, it's an impact.
Yeah.
Even small projects or several hundred trucks where the sand, you know, coming out onto the beach, they take a long time. It does work, but it's not a great solution.
Yeah. So is the option, best option right now to do the emergency mitigation or the general mitigation to buy us time to do this project here, is that kind of where you're headed or...
I would like to give it a little time. Again, I understand that some owners are going to be very concerned about their current condition, but overall, that area does have a better setback than a lot of critically eroded areas that we see up and down the coast. If we compare them to the eastern end of the island several years ago where, you know, houses are being undermined, they are in a better position. However, we are going into, you know, hurricane season, so there's always that risk you take. Supplementing some sand, if the beach condition is showing signs that it's stabilizing and you see some dry sand kind of piled up along the toe of the dune, then I think you have a good chance of sand that you place, you know, maintaining itself for a little while. But if it's actively eroding, then if you truck in sand, it may not last very long at all. You kind of want to give nature enough time to settle itself out and see how it does before I would recommend placing a very large, you know, dune restoration project. You could potentially, or individual owners could potentially do smaller scale projects and kind of see how they work.
So what do the owners do in the meantime while they're, I mean, I'm up on that beach four times a week and it's continuing to erode. So I'm just wondering, what can we do in the meantime to stop that erosion?
Again, there's not much you can do to stop it other than throw additional sand at it via truckload sand. If it does get to the point where, you know, pools are getting jeopardized and sandbags to buy enough time for this project to get in place are your best solution for significant protection. You know, if there is a storm event, the sandbags will actually protect that a little bit better than a small dune would. So those are localized options that you could do.
And Stephen, and that would only be approved by the state for those properties that are within 20 feet of the active waterline.
The only option for any area outside of that 20-foot emergency area is trucking in some sand.
Yeah, I've seen at least a couple that are probably within that right now too.
But I, I mean, I was down there as well, but I, there was no beach when I was there. I mean, I was there at high tide and there was no beach.
There's no beach.
There was absolutely, you couldn't walk the beach. I mean, there was no public beach at this point. So, you know, I don't know what you're seeing. Maybe I went at the wrong time.
Right around, yeah. It was still a little before I had tied when we were out there, just a bit ago, but even at that very corner, there is no beach at high tide. But that also tells you that if you place sand right there, it's immediately going to start getting, getting eroded away.
Stephen, you said roughly 300 block towards the breach is, you're starting to see some re-nourishment for lack of a better term.
That's where it's most significant. North of there, you still see, you still see parts of the dune that was scraped up after Irma is still there.
Yeah.
In 2018, you can see where that sand still exists, so they're still doing better than they had been after that storm. Still not ideal, but it is showing that it's healing.
For, the extensive project was done at Wild Dunes several years ago, about 16 or 18 years ago, the area was in, also in really bad shape and we went through the nightmare of sandbags.
Right.
And that's, to me, would be, you're the expert, not me, but the position of last resort because they're really bad for the environment. They break apart and they're up and down the coast for hundreds of miles.
Yeah, Ala Palms was the test case for that and I was out there as they were pulling out all 13,000 of them.
Right.
And that started out as the small five gallon sandbags, which were very quickly demonstrated that they didn't work. They went to the larger sandbags, which worked better, but still were not great and not maintained. The state has adjusted their criteria for sandbags to enforce them to be better maintained and also have a, an account set up where the owners will be required to remove them. They actually have to put money in to remove them.
And if you remember, there was a new innovative seawall plan that would let the water in and bring it back out, but that failed and it left sand behind, remember that?
Yes, the wave dissipation device.
Yeah.
That was shown not to be very effective at all.
Right.
And then they had to put sandbags behind them. Again, sandbags are, I think, a last resort to protect, you know, significant infrastructure. There are other materials and designs of sandbags that have been put in at Debedu that seem to work a little better. They're lower, they're still one cubic yard, but they're flatter and lower, so they seem to hold up a little better and they're different material. Again, it's, none of these are great options. I don't want to represent that they are.
But in summary, would you reiterate what your recommendations are and what you've seen from your past experience with this?
Right.
I understand that, you know, the sand's coming down the beach from Wild Dunes, a lot of it's still offshore, so the sand's there, it's just not on shore, is that correct?
Correct. And if there were more of an area meeting that critical threshold, then I would recommend the city try to attempt a scraping project to shift that sand back up to the dune because it can be done much cheaper. With the, with only two projects or two properties, you know, two, three, four at the most probably that could meet that criteria, you could try to do some, some small scale trucking just to evaluate, you know, is this actually holding up for a couple of weeks? But I don't want to recommend that the city spend $200,000, you know, on a project that may not last. It may not, you could focus on the most critically eroded areas right now and, you know, reduce that cost. There's no minimum that you have to do, but that would be, again, if it was affecting a wider swath, then I think that might be a city-led effort. If the erosion continues to get worse, then I think the city needs to be prepared to do something like that.
And Stephen, what's next on the Army Corps?
They're going to submit to us some 65% design here in the next couple of weeks, I think. That's about all the information I have. Again, they did say this morning that they do want, they hope to have it under construction by the end of this year and it may bleed into early next year. I said a minimum of 200,000 yards, it may be as much as 400,000 or 500,000 yards, which would be a great project for that whole area.
Ma'am, I have a question. We've been getting quite a few comments from people living in this area that are really concerned about their property and I want to respond to them the best way we can, knowing that telling them there's a project that's going to be done next year is not going to satisfy them if they're losing yards of front yard every, every day. And I'm afraid that we might have a situation similar to what happened at the tip of Wild Dunes where the homeowners took things into their own hands and actually put, built their own structure and got fined and there was a whole mess about that and everything. So are there things that we can suggest that would be okay for those homeowners to do if they feel like they absolutely have to do something, but it would be at their own cost?
Again, any owner can, they would be able to operate under the city's general permit that y'all have applied for to truck in sand.
Okay.
As long as it's beach compatible and OCRM says that yes, that sand's okay.
Okay.
So that was part of the reasoning for the city going ahead and doing that is then they have, y'all have a permit that would cover that entire area that any owner could go and utilize with your permission.
And that's the permit you mentioned earlier that may take another two to three weeks to get approved, correct?
It's not a year. No, it's not a year.
Not a year, yeah.
Probably about another two weeks in the state.
And they can, they can go out and hire their own people for it. Now, who monitors what they're doing to make sure that they don't just, again, take things in their own hands?
I think Desiree does that.
Well, I would suggest if that's the path that this will take, that the city hires and has CSC help monitor and make sure that the work is being done in accordance with the permit application, the permit conditions.
Ma'am, I think we're already at item six. I would just like to make a, that we, and whilst, while still here to consult with, that we move this in the agenda and discuss it now.
Yeah, second. Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So I think we've talked about this at length, but my, I guess part of my point, problem with yours, that solution is you, you have made one homeowner doing it, then you've got three that don't, then you've got another one that does it and really you have no, you have no benefit that way, is the way I see it. Zero benefit. And I don't see a way for us to get homeowners. I mean, partly what we're doing here is protecting the beach. We're not just protecting homeowners' yards, we're trying to protect the beach. As I said, you know, I'm seeing continual erosion. There's points in that we don't have a public beach anymore. And in some degree, I don't see how we can expect other homeowners to pay to restore a public beach. So my recommendation is, is that we get you to put together a design of how we can mitigate this until we can get this project put in place and try to expedite the bigger project, but that we, you know, if it takes $200,000 to put in and rebuild a dune, that we find a way to do that and the city does it. And does it in a way that maximizes the potential that it lasts until we can get the larger project. Because I think if we leave it to homeowners, you know, some of them are going to build, you know, some of them see that, you know, we've gotten numerous emails that, you know, they're watching their yards literally wash away every day and they're going to do things to stop it and then there's going to be litigation and then there's going to be all kinds of other things that happen. And my proposal is, is that the city, you know, that's what partly why we do a beach nourishment fund and we have funding there, is that we put in some temporary, the best thing we can do to stop this erosion from occurring, preserve the beach and expedite this longer project.
In this project, being the Army Corps?
The Army Corps. I think this is a great solution to it. I think we'll do anything possible to expedite it so that we're ready to go as soon as practically possible, but I think we need some interim solution in place right now that stops what we see occurring down there on that end of the island.
I agree with that, what councilperson Bogosian said. What I'm just thinking of is just in case somebody decides to jump the gun down there without, that we have an idea in place that is possible if a homeowner wants to step forward and just purchase their own sand for the front of their house.
Well, if we've got a, if we've got an approval come, or I guess the 21st is the deadline for the public comment and a week later, we can get a permit. I mean, I think it sounds to me like by the first week of July, if we went forward with a, we can bring this up anytime, but go forward with the project, we could start right away.
Well, that depends on the availability of a contractor as well.
Yeah, and you'd also have to coordinate with the local turtle team to ensure that there were no nests between the...
There's one nest at 622. I talked to the head of the turtle team and she's in support of, I mean, they seem to be in support of mitigation.
Yeah, and again, from the engineering perspective, we're always happy to have more sand on the beach. But there's nothing we can do to stop the erosion. So if we place it there, you know, I just can't guarantee you that that dune won't, you know, will still be there two weeks later in the areas that are actively eroding. So again, you may want to start as a smaller project in those areas and see how that holds up. And if it looks like it's holding up where your investment's, you know, paying off, then we can expand out. That is the good thing about trucking projects is they're very personal.
Yeah. I don't think anybody would be in favor of putting sand in there today and then next week it's gone. I think we have to be smart about what we do and try to engineer it so a way that, like I said, it has the best chance of survival for the next six, nine months. And if we see things shift, then we can always bring more, you know, bring more sand in. But I do think doing nothing is what's causing homeowners to start talking about, you know, taking matters in their own hand because they don't see any kind of a plan that stops their yards from going out to sea.
Yeah. The longest range plan, we also are looking at certainly including all of that area south of the pier in the next permit for an offshore project. We did that in the last project, but the beach condition was fairly healthy at that time and there wasn't funding identified for that south end. For this time, I think we're going to try to, you know, with council's approval, find a bar area closer to that south end that would make the economics of nourishing that area a lot better and including that in a potential nourishment project if the erosion continues.
And that would be, again, above and beyond the Army Corps project longer term?
Yes, that would be kind of in conjunction with another project at the east end, you know, whenever that time comes. We're trying to get out way ahead of this upcoming project.
Is it too much to ask that before the council, by the council meeting, we come back and have a sort of a plan presented on what the mitigation could be and the timing of all that past the 21st? Yes, Stephen, before we answer, that's two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, those plans are very easy to do. We would, we can present, I'll send Desiree kind of a map of the areas that we feel are the most critically eroded. Again, it seems like somewhere right around Third Avenue is a transition zone between actively eroding and no dry sand beach at all. So we'd probably focus on that area and come up with a quantity that could be placed there. And I, again, I think maybe working as a phased approach or staggered approach and seeing maybe a, give it two weeks to, give one area two weeks to kind of evolve and then before we commit to doing a fuller project, maybe.
That's a plan.
And Stephen, are you, you said you haven't done the measurements and looked for this year for us like you do every year. I mean, could you mind change in two weeks if you go out and measure and there's some that are 15 feet, you know, from the critical line? I mean, that would be part of the conversation, I guess.
Right, and as soon as there was, you know, a dozen properties or more meeting that emergency condition, we would, I would recommend going to the state. I've already kind of discussed that, that, you know, let's scrape a dune because that does work in areas where you have a wide profile. Again, it's not that you have a critically eroding profile, it's just the way the shape changes around these inlets. So there is sand that you could scrape and that's a much cheaper, quicker, kind of cleaner project to do, but you just can't, you don't have that option right now.
And we've submitted for the general permit for the emergency, is that a separate permit?
It would be a separate permit, but it's a quicker permit.
Gotcha. And not one you can do until you've met the 20-foot threshold?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Desiree?
So we'll plan on having a proposal from CSC for you all to consider at the 26, June 27th meeting. By then, the public comment period had been ended. We would have an idea of how much time the state would need before granting a permit, understand what conditions they're going to add to the permit because we're in term nesting season and be able to execute a plan at that time.
Let me ask you something too, Desiree, regarding funding, a related project, a topic on this.[1784.42] on this. It's my understanding that the state has pulled any beach nourishment funding out of the budget. And to me, that's a problem, that we don't get, you know, if these are public beaches, then the public needs to help pay for them. You know, it shouldn't be the Isle Palm taxpayers or tax money that's going solely for the beach nourishment. And I think that's something we need to take up with, with some of our representatives and our lobbyists to make sure that we get our voices heard there. You know, everybody wants to come to a beach, and everybody thinks that the state pays for it through their tax money, while they're not paying for it. And I think it's something we need to push pretty heavy with our lobbyists and our representatives.
Yeah, and John, remember what Senator Campson had put in, an ongoing funding mechanism for beach nourishment, which, you know, the coastal communities were certainly in favor of, and that's what's got pulled out. So, you know, they've continued to do the same thing they've always done, it's just a one-time dump of money in for beach nourishment that you can't count on because we're not ready to do a big beach nourishment. We're going to do a permit this year to have it for five years ahead, but I hear you, I completely agree.
And just for the record, I know some of you have asked this before, in terms of how much money the city has in the Beach Preservation Fee Fund. As a reminder, that fund, or that 1% in accommodations tax revenue was adopted in 2015. Since then, it has generated, to date, seven, seven and a half million dollars, and it generates about a million, a million five. In FY22, as y'all recall, we had unprecedented revenues and from tourism, tourism revenue, and that fund generated 1.8. So just so that you have an idea how much that fund collects every year, and again, it's 1% on heads and beds, people who stay overnight.
Yeah, that was Mike Satilli when he was in the State House, he got that pushed through. He was a big advocate for it.
That fund balance is what, about nine, eight, nine million?
Seven and a half. Seven point five.
And that's why this is such a great project though, because it's, you know, it's very cost-effective.
Yeah, just real quickly, historically, it's always been considered that a homeowner on the beach owns to the mean high tide mark as their property. Is that correct?
Generally, yes, sometimes, not always. If there's other, like things grants and things can be a little different, but generally, yes, to the mean.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so that's been, that's been sort of a generally accepted thing, that you own to the mean high tide mark?
Yeah, the mean high tide line, though, is also up for debate on what that actually means.
Well, I get it, yeah. But what does that mean when you do have the sea encroaching on what would be considered private property?
Anywhere.
What makes the, where does the ownership begin and end with the, and the responsibility for re-nourishment with that homeowner as the sea encroaches on what would be considered typically their private property?
Yeah. That's a good question for an attorney, because I have that question.
Well, I don't mean to put you on a legal spot, I'm just.
But generally, anywhere seaward of the vegetation line is part of the state trust. So any person can go on that. So if the beach erodes back into somebody's yard, somebody can walk on that wet sand beach. If the beach accretes back, I don't know. It's a question that comes up. There's been Attorney General's opinions on that, on does that become state property or does it refer back to the homeowner? I still think it hasn't been fully clear yet on what that means. The issue on who's responsible for maintaining a beach, it's, I don't think there is an answer to that. It's, individuals can take ownership of their properties and say that this is my investment and I'm going to do what it takes to protect that. And so some of the private communities, that's kind of their approach, is, you know, their house is their investment, and if they have to spend, you know, X amount of dollars a year to protect that and maintain their property values, they do that themselves. But it needs to be done on a community-wide basis because individuals can't maintain a beach by themselves. It has to be a, you know, a stretch. Other communities, the towns, you know, are completely 100% responsible for it, they take that ownership and responsibility, and it takes it out of the owner's hands, but then the owners sometimes are left with, you know, situations where they may have a house that's critically eroding for two or three years while a town builds funds or gets a permit or whatever it may be.
You answered that like an attorney.
Or an economist.
I've heard it a couple of times.
On the one hand, on the other hand. Stephen and Patrick, thank you guys for over the years and this help, so appreciate that. And Desiree, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Douglas? Okay. All right, Amy, we'll go to the dashboard. Next item is Dashboard of City Operations. Desiree, I'll let you walk through some of this.
All right. The slide on the screen is updated from the one in your packet just when you look at the fire department calls by type, and I'll talk you through that, but you can see it, you can see the updated numbers on the screen. I'll go ahead and start with personnel vacancies. We have a building licensing clerk opening in our building department, looking for nine BSOs. As y'all recall, we increased the budget amount so that we can hire more that could be dedicated to the beach and to parking in excess of what we've had in the, in the past. We still have a code enforcement officer position in the police department. We had made an offer to an individual who has since then withdrawn from consideration, so unfortunately, we're back to square one. We might have some leads of folks that may be interested and may be good at that, that we'll be pursuing, but unfortunately, we were expecting that position to start, I believe, this week or next week, and that is not, that is not happening. And the other, the other vacancy that we have is in the public works department. We have one city L driver position. Also wanted to publicly announce that our new finance director will be starting in a couple of weeks. She'll be working alongside Debbie for some time to work on the transition, but I'm happy that we.
Six or seven months.
I'm trying, I'm trying, no pushing. But we're excited to get that process completed and excited to have Ms. Hamilton join our team. A couple of things that I wanted to highlight here, we'll talk more in detail under livability regarding short-term rentals, but just wanted to show you all what we've, what we've collected for the year. Police department charges are trending higher than in past years, with the exception of parking citations. That is still year-to-date trending behind the last two years, and that, again, that's something that we're hoping to improve upon by hiring additional personnel and ideally outsource that, that operation for next year. Municipal court docket, the number of cases last month, you all approved an associate judge so that we can have more additional municipal courts throughout the month. You can see how that, the number of cases have increased significantly year over year, which shows it's a direct correlation to our enforcement efforts from, from the police department. Fire department calls by type, here we made, this is the correction that we made from the version that you have in your packet, and it's not a correction, it's just an explanation. We've been talking about, year-to-date numbers for 2023 include automatic aid calls. Of the 571 calls were auto-aid, 33% were auto-aid. Of those, 167 were canceled en route, and 20 were actually attended by our fire department personnel in Mount Pleasant. 65 calls in IOP were supported by Mount Pleasant Fire Department. Just so that we have an apples-to-apples comparison, I had requested the chief to see if we can get numbers from Mount Pleasant about the number of calls their dispatch and council en route so that we have a comparison to see at the end of the year when we will review this pilot program for, for automatic aid. Public garbage, public works garbage and yard debris trending a little bit up compared to May for the past two years. Recreation department registrations, a little bit trending down year over year, but up for the month of May, which I think it's a great sign. And then the only other thing I wanted to highlight was just the community events that we have coming up. The farmers market is coming back starting this month, third Thursday of June through, through October, and that's going to be at the recreation center. Also, a community overdose prevention and Narcan training, that's something that the fire department's going to be offering. It was a request from our front beach restaurant owners, wanting to make sure that their staff are trained in the administration of Narcan. The mayor has his coffee with the mayor event every month, and that will be held at City Hall in June, June 30. And then the IOP beach run is July 29.
I have one request.
Hang on, Jim.
Jimmy?
Just a question about, please report, well, three quick questions. Animal violations, so year-to-date is 30. Last year, year-to-date was two. What's the big increase there? And also, and also business license, year-to-date is 28. Last year was one. And also, the only other one I have a question about, the noise violation, year-to-date for the whole island is two?
So you, I think you're looking at the livability report?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's.
It's a monthly, well, maybe it's livability, but it just has everything on it.
We're going to get, let's defer that conversation for just 30 minutes.
Okay.
We'll finish the dashboard, and then we're going to go.
I got one comment on this, Desiree. I think that on that short-term rental license, it says five months for 23. I think that should be one month.
It's calendar year, not.
Yes, the license year, so the license year, you're right, it would be two months since May 1st, May and June.
Okay, this is through June or through May?
It's one month.
It's one month. It's one month, you're correct.
Would it be too much to just relabel that or put it in another box? Because there has been a lot of confusion as to the time periods that are being compared, and I know we're going to talk about it a little bit later, but I don't think anybody, or too many people in the public know what a license year is. So I think we should be real clear when we're counting that, you know, those metrics above are definitely a five-month period, but this metric is not the calendar year, or the license year runs from May to April. So I think we ought to, we ought to be clear and break that out differently.
Yeah, the reports that we're going to discuss on short-term rentals specifically, we did include the license year so that folks understand when we say 2022, what it means in 2023. But yeah, we can make those adjustments.
Jim? I just have one more suggestion, and talking about automatic aid, automatic aid should be reported both ways. Calls for us to aid other municipalities and calls from us requesting automatic aid. It would be nice to see what reciprocal we're getting from that.
So the calls are not requested, that's why it's automatic, so as soon as a call is made, when the department receives a call, they make an assessment of the type of call and what resources they need. Oftentimes, that's why you see that number of, the number of calls that were canceled en route. We're automatically dispatched, and then the department directly says, you know, cancel, don't come to us, we got it, essentially. We've noted that, so 187 are those that were canceled from us to Mount Pleasant.
Yes.
We do not know how many calls were canceled the other way around, which we requested that information, hopefully we have that for next month.
Yeah, okay, so you'll get that for us next month?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I'll.
That's all I have.
Okay, and we want to hit the livability report in the police, because that's some new information.
Yes, we have the monthly report for every department, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, make sure that you're, that you and the public are looking at it. There's a new livability report, and I'm going to ask the chief to come up and discuss that in a little bit of detail. We're doing it differently than we have done it in the past, a lot more information here. And we've made some adjustments over the past couple of months based on feedback we've received from council and from community members. I also wanted to highlight, there is a new rec, the report, monthly report from the recreation department, a little bit different than what you have seen in the past. I think it's a great addition. If you have any specific questions of data or visuals that you would like to see month over time, let us know, we'll adjust that. I think that it's a, it's a great direction and work that the department has done, and I just want to highlight that.
I agree, I compliment you for the new report. It's really, really informative and great.
Yeah, very well done.
Good job.
And the other thing I wanted to point out is the public works stormwater management report shows a lot of the efforts, in-house maintenance efforts that we have been doing on stormwater management, and that's something unique that we have, we started doing recently with the purchase of equipment that allows us to be more proactive in maintaining ditches and drains and all that. So I just wanted to alert you to that, and if you want to spend some time looking at that, I think it would be, it will show you that, that we're taking very seriously the city's priority of managing and maintaining drainage and ensuring that we have a well-run stormwater management plan.
Yeah, it was significant for the month. Robert and Lyndon, thank you guys for doing that.
Yes, they've been busy.
Very thorough.
Chief, you want to touch on this?
Y'all want to hear about this armadillo?
I'm not sure what happened with the armadillo.
Finally caught the cat.
Yeah, they jump.
They do jump.
Can I ask how your BSO's doing?
He is doing well. I talked to him on Sunday, and I do want to take a minute to brag on him.
Yeah, chief, give a little background because not everybody's up to date on that.
So on Sunday, one of our BSOs were doing parking enforcement. They wrote an individual a ticket for four feet off pavement, and that individual showed up shortly after the ticket, confronted the officer, demanded that the officer, the BSO void the ticket out, and the BSO said no. It was a clear violation, and the individual stood in front of the vehicle trying to keep him from leaving, and the BSO tried to leave anyways, and as he did, the individual, who is twice the size of the BSO, struck him in the face with a closed fist, and then got in his vehicle and fled the scene. But I have to brag, that is not something our BSOs come into this job expecting to get, you know, police officers don't expect it, but we know it's kind of, it might happen. But BSOs do not expect it or think it might happen to them. And he was very sharp and quickly used his radio to hit the emergency button, get the full function of the radio, and was able to get the information out that he was assaulted, the vehicle information, the tag, get it all out. Our communication specialist was able to use our cameras on the Palm Boulevard to say, hey, that vehicle's going toward Sullivan's Island, and Sullivan's Island and Mount Pleasant were able to get their officers out in the route that they might travel, and Mount Pleasant found the vehicle, stopped the vehicle. We went over and took custody of the individual that was driving and put him in jail for punching our BSO, because that is not acceptable. But the BSO, when I talked to him, he is a young gentleman and was very, very nice when I talked to him. He was laughing and said, you know, I'm going to have a cool story to say, and a bruise, but he's doing well, thank you for asking.
Glad to hear it.
I was very impressed with him. That was going to throw most people off, and he didn't. He handled it like a champ, like a true professional. In reference to the reports here, as Ms. Fergoso pointed out earlier, these are new reports that we just started doing this year, and as we continue to go through them and we get information, we're going to be fine-tuning them. And I realize that this one is slightly different than some that we did in the past. In the past, we had three different breakouts of what noise looks like, and at the end of the day, a noise violation is a noise violation is a noise violation, doesn't matter which kind it is. And so to simplify it and keep from having questions that were coming up, we reduced that down to one noise section on here, just to keep it easy. And you'll see next month, some of this might change. Like dog at large, I appreciate that our code enforcement officer helps our, our animal control officer to catch dogs at large, but that's not really a livability part, and so we're going to remove that from the livability report as well. It'll go into the animal control section, helping out with that, but not tracked under livability unless it is a call pertaining to a dog at large that specifically relates to a short-term rental or livability issue. And you'll also see next month, we will add where it says short-term rental occupancy violations on this. See it over here?
Yeah.
That was confusing, so it will say other short-term rental occupancy violations. So any of those, I'm sorry, the one above it, rental property violations, that will say other. Anything that's not outlined on here will fall into that category. The, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then we will add a bar graph for you next, next month. I love graphs, I love visuals, they're great to follow. I'm a, I was an infantry soldier once, so crowns and pictures are great. But bar graph that will give you a year-to-date snapshot of where we look by charge or by complaint type, and it will outline the type of complaints, just like you see here, except year-to-date, and then warnings and citations that were issued for those different types of violations or calls that came in. Going back to Councilman Ward's question on the front, what you see under charges where it says two, that would mean that we made two charges for noise violations.
As opposed to, what's a year?
Correct, so one of them will be for the month of May, and the other one would have been for another month prior to that. And the other one would've been for another month prior to that.
I think it's, uh, a good stat that you have about the, especially recently, roll cart violations. I don't know about other people, but I've been getting a lot of calls and it sounds like there's a lot more. But it turns out to be there's only been six citations issued. And I talked with Desiree today and she said that the policy with the officer is that he always gives a warning first. And then, so that's why the warnings are 58. And so the total's 64, but only six citations were issued.
That's correct. He goes out of his way when it comes to the roll cart violations to, uh, because it's something that's been on the books that we haven't necessarily enforced. And so he went out of his way to give an exorbitant amount of time to become compliant. And I would tell you, we did our beach emergency vehicle operation training this morning down on 45th Avenue area. And when I drove up Palm Boulevard, there were two recycle bins. That was it. Everything else was off the street, it was clean, it was pretty. And that is a result of the work that he's done with those roll carts. And the fact that he could do that and we only had six tickets issued, I think that's a huge success and a huge win for, for code enforcement.
John.
Yeah, I, I would like to compliment, um, Sergeant Kowski, Jase. He, he's done, I, I've told him this a couple of times, I've had interactions with him, but I think he's doing a remarkable job with it. And I've noticed the difference and I think residents has noticed the difference with what he's done. It's important that we fill the other one though, and he even says that, uh, there's a lot more work to do. But I, I, I do think that he's, he's doing a good job. My question though is on the unfounded noise complaints and are we looking at those and as a kind of a continuous loop in training and, and, uh, the officers that, why are they unfounded? Were they really unfounded? I mean, if somebody's gonna call on a noise complaint, um, the threshold today is, you know, is a reasonable person feel it's, 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 it's noise. And, uh, and I don't know if we're looking back at those and kind of doing a self-reflection on, were they really unfounded or not? And who's doing that?
So we do, the, the officers have to complete a form and it explains why it's unfounded. And a lot of times these unfounded might've been that when the caller called it in, there was noise. But when the officers arrived, there was no noise. And so to that, that's unfounded. The officer got there, there was no noise. Some of it may be that a call came in, uh, and I've, I've heard this one recently about kids, just today, kids in a pool. And when an officer shows up, if kids are playing in a pool, that's not an, an excessive noise. And so that would be listed as an unfounded, unless they were partying and, uh, but we were talking about a four and five-year-old kid. They, they clearly were not throwing a party. That would be listed as an unfounded.
Okay.
But we do, yes sir, we track them and we check them to make sure.
Yeah.
Because if it's something that should've been founded, um, sometimes if we're kinda hesitant, we'll look at their body camera to go back and review whether it was founded or unfounded. And then that's a good teaching moment for us to use with the new officers to make sure that they're understanding what we're looking for.
Scott.
Chief, uh, just to shift gears on you, can you go to your other report where it shows your charges and other, um, I just wanna make sure I'm interpreting it correctly as well? I think it's back of you.
Be the first page.
It's right after the dashboard, yeah.
One more.
There you go. Am I reading that right? It looks like the May, uh, this year and the year-to-date are, are exceeding by quite a bit, uh, the trending in last year on what I would consider maybe some of the other more severe charges of other, in that category. Is there anything driving that volume or am I reading that correctly? Or it just seems like we're running a lot higher or there's just a lot more activity, enforcement, et cetera?
I think a little bit of all of the above. It, it has been, Chief Oliveris and I were talking about this before we came in here. This year so far has seemed to be busier for us. And even today, the calls were coming in consistent and our officers were, were working hard. So there's a little bit of the officers are getting more calls and these officers are being very proactive. And some of the things like, I'm not sure exactly what charge you were looking at.
Well, I'm just like, I mean, I'm looking at the bottom, it looks like we're about, running about 50% higher year-to-date when I look at this 620, uh, yeah, 628 versus 915 total charges in all these categories. Looks like we're running a lot, uh, a lot higher.
That is correct. And some of that comes to the, when you look at driving under suspension, for example, uh, that's double what it was last year. And those charges are going to be coming from traffic enforcement. The increased enforcement of traffic violations typically will lead to more, not only traffic-related tickets, but that's whom we're finding maybe illegal narcotics or firearms or something like that that they shouldn't have. Or even the driving under suspension, uh, or the DUIs. And even golf carts, I mean, the numbers are small, but when you compare it to last year, the, I think that enforcement is, it's showing that we have made a change in our approach to it. And we are being more specific and actually focusing hard on these things this year. And that, that's all gonna drive a part of it, to include the increased calls for service.
Thank you.
I also wanna add to chief, 2020, 2021, and for part of 2022, we were not fully staffed in the police department. At one point we had a seven, eight vacancies. We're fully staffed now, um, which I think is reflective to in, in, in a lot of the bandwidth that you're able to, um, to do every month.
I would definitely agree with that. Right now we have one officer that is in field training, meaning that he is not a solo officer yet. Hopefully, if, if things go right, Tuesday, he will move, be blessed off and move on. And then we have one more that is going through the pre-academy. And then we will have one vacancy show up in next month that we'll be working to fill.
So in some cases.
This is, uh, good information, I hate to drag this out, but could you, um, give a little more detail on the business license? Compared, it's 28 year-to-date compared to one last year. Do you have a name of the officer or something?
No, sir, that falls under code enforcement, Kowski as well. He, uh, when we first created that code enforcement, that was really our gear, was, was looking at those business licenses and, and targeting those that were coming on the weekends that thought they could just find the loop and work when City Hall was closed. And Officer Kowski.
A lot of that's contractors.
Correct, yes. He's, he's done a phenomenal job. Some of those will be short-term rentals too. But didn't have a license that he did cite.
Very good, thank you very much.
Katie.
I was just gonna say, it does sound like a lot of this is possibly that we're doing a better, y'all are doing a better job or you have more people to be doing the job than it is the fact that like our crime is actually going up. Is that a, a more positive way of looking at it?
It is a positive way. And, and it is ripe, it is twofold. The officers are doing a fantastic job and it's great when you see the morale increase, uh, when, from one, it, it kind of spreads. And then you see more enforcement opportunities. It is, I would point out, we do have more calls for service and nationwide, we, we have seen an increase in crimes. But I think overall, we're doing well in the fact that we are so proactive with traffic enforcement and these other things. They are saving us from those stats that we would get for property crimes and those other violent-type crimes because we're able to stop it before it happens and, and arrest people most of the time.
I got a parking ticket the other day, so keep up the good work.
Desiree, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, chief, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Just, you might as well sit right there. You might as well sit right there, you know how this works. All right, next item, under, item six, strategic plan, policy initiatives and priorities. A livability warrant, discussion of recommendation from the Public Safety Committee to further action on a new noise ordinance until the city receives noise. Study report from Wild Dunes Resort and to consider hiring a noise consultant and/or city planner to advise the city on noise policy. You recall, we passed first reading last month, goes back to committee as per usual. See what the committee's recommending, Jimmy or Desiree, anything to add?
The, um, committee, the committee, uh, recommended exactly what is stated. And, uh, it, it, the vote was three to zero.
Jim.
I just had an additional comment that I wanted to make, a, a statement that I'd like to read. I was recently requested by a resident to accuse myself from participating in deliberations on the noise ordinance concerning the Wild Dunes Resort because of a conflict of interest with proposed MLK reception to be hosted by the city of Isle of Palms and occurring at Sweetgrass Inn. I have acted as a facilitator among the various parties, specifically the YWCA of Greater Charleston, the event sponsor and the resort. Since I have not and will not have any financial gain from the interaction, it is my understanding that there is no conflict of interest for me. The Wild Dunes Community Association, on whose board my husband sits, has no financial or other interest in the MLK reception. Our city attorney has stated that there is no conflict of interest for me, but the demand was made again. So I am taking the step of requesting an opinion from the South Carolina Ethics Commission and expect to hear from them by June 15th this week. In the meantime, I will continue to perform my civic duties until told otherwise by a reliable authority. If there is a perceived conflict of interest for any action related to where I live, then for every decision we make concerning the Isle of Palms, all of council would be in, in conflict since we all are affected by our decisions and we would be unable to do our job. The relevant section, I'm not gonna read it tonight, but the relevant section to the state code that I'm referring to is the Ethics Act, South Carolina Code, Section 8-13-700. Thank you.
Desiree, anything on the noise ordinance from your view, need to add or change?
No, sir. I am in the process of trying to secure some proposals from folks that have assisted other communities in advising on their noise, um, ordinances. As I reported to the Public Safety Committee last week or the week before, um, not a whole lot of them out there. And those that are and do this type of work are really busy. So I don't know how quickly we can get some assistance to work on this. I know that we are expecting a summer report from Wild Dunes. They've conducted their own analysis and are sharing a summary with the city. I, again, don't know what that will entail. In the meantime, Chief Cornet and I have discussed an effort at, um, at random times throughout the summer, be able to utilize our resources that are on the island to take some meet, some readings. We had, we did that, um, uh, last year when we started talking about a, uh, changes to the noise ordinance to include some decibel, um, uh, sort of establishing objectives, uh, and decibel, um, limits dependent by zone. So we can continue that effort. It will not be, uh, very scientific potentially.
It will at least be data.
But at least some data points that we can point to. And, and we've obviously identified, uh, several areas, not only front beach and, and the area, uh, around the resort, but also in our community to try to identify, um, you, you, to have some more data regarding the decibels and, and, and what the, what the real issue that we may be trying to solve by proposing a new noise ordinance. So we can do that through, in, in the meantime. And as soon as I am able to secure a proposal from, uh, whether it's a city planner or a consultant firm, um, we'll, we'll bring that before you all, um, for consideration.
John.
Yeah, I, I wasn't able to watch the Public Safety Committee meeting, so, uh, maybe this was covered in there, maybe it wasn't, I, I'm not sure. But one of the questions I have is, and it's different from Reed's in here, but you said a summary, we wanna receive a summary report. I, I don't know why we wouldn't receive the full report. If there's data in there that we would look at and wanna analyze and look at, I mean, I, I would think we'd wanna get the full report, uh, if it's available.
So that is, that is up to.
Yeah, of course.
The private organization and.
I understand that, but I just don't know why you just provided a summary, you just give us the report and let us, you know, that includes the summary. And then I, I guess this, you know, I have an opinion, I, I, you know, I, I don't know that at this point, uh, another noise, um, consultant is gonna tell us. I mean, we've used about, you know, a dozen different cities, um, as a, as a guideline, there's noise ordinances. They've all, I'm sure some of them have used noise engineers. Our noise is not any different than somebody else's city's noise. And I think we can, I think we're kind of in, uh, analysis paralysis here of the same. And, I mean, I'm willing to hold off and get, uh, Wild Dunes report, but at some point, we're gonna have to either make a decision whether we want a noise, noise ordinance or we don't, drop it. And the same has been going on way too long, uh, in my opinion.
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, it seems like we're the first city that's ever tried to put in a noise ordinance and I don't think we are. So, um, I do feel like we are reinventing the wheel here. But, and I would also like to understand why we can't just be provided a report. I don't, I can't imagine that there's anything confidential, um, in a noise report, so.
If I may say something?
Desiree, sorry.
Yeah. It's their report, they pay for it, they can disclose whatever they wish. This is, you know, we're not voting on it tonight, this is just, the, the motion was to recommend to postpone this. We recommend to full council. Now, when it comes to full council on the 27th, if you don't like it, then you can vote against the recommendation and vote for the noise ordinance. How simple is that?
Desiree, anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Next item, discussion of ordinance 2023-02 to regulate e-bikes and battery-assisted motorized skateboards on the beach. Again, this was passed first reading at our last month's meeting. Refer back to the Public Safety Committee after review. I understand there's no changes recommended from the committee at this point.
No, I just have one question for the police chief, if I may.
Absolutely, far away.
Thank you, sir. Um, how many complaints are you having about this? Have you had, um, a lot or a little bit, or has it seemed to increase just recently? What's, what's the trend between now and last year, this time?
To, I think since e-bikes really started to become a thing, we've had a, a few complaints, not a lot, that would come in each summer. It's typically around the time when the beaches are busiest.
Right.
But it's not, I wouldn't say it, it compares, when I do my priority of complaints, it is very low on the, on the totem pole because we just don't get as many.
Right.
So, not a lot. We, we have had several here recently though.
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of activity recently.
That's correct.
You know, things, things kind of flash up and.
Yes.
You know, fade away. Kind of like, recently, it's been, the times have been going since. I think, uh, General Cornwall has had a hard time there a couple of centuries ago, 'cause it's very dynamic. But, um, so I was just wondering, uh, but to this point, um, you haven't heard of, uh, any injuries or anything?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay.
I am not aware of any incidents where somebody's been hurt.
Yeah, I got a couple of complaints from today that I would log if you need some data.
Yeah, um, I, just a couple of items. One, I'm not clear, I thought when we first started talking about this, we were looking at a, um, you know, we either ban them or not ban them. And it looks like now there has been a change, it looks like we're doing a 10 to 5, uh, and, and on a calendar time. I can just tell you from experience and, and I think when these e-bikes first started coming out, they were for pedal assist. And now they're, uh, basically electronic.
Full speed.
Full speed ahead, 40 miles an hour. And, um, again, I've, I've seen them on the beach a lot more frequently than I did just five years ago. I'm a fan of e-bikes, I've used them before, they're great, but they're becoming, um, they're, they're basically electric, you know, low-end motorcycles on, in many cases. And I've seen some quite powerful ones out on the beach. So I don't know what's changed. I think, I think that the, uh, you know, the ordinance that we're looking at, I think was kind of an exception in North Myrtle Beach where they're using it. But most municipalities, they either ban them or they don't ban them. And I don't know, and, and one, one more thing is that, uh, early on, on a Sunday morning, uh, running at the beach, we see the lot at the county filling up by 10 o'clock. So the whole front beach is full. Um, I don't, I don't think 10 o'clock is a, is a, that's a good time. I think we oughta, at minimum, broaden that if we're gonna be even considering a timeframe from, you know, 9 to 6 or what have you. But I think we gotta decide whether or not we wanna take the risk of the, uh, growing population of the e-bikes, uh, and the horsepower on the beach and the growing population of the people on the beach and whether or not we want these motorized vehicles running up and down the beach with the risk of hitting somebody.
Yeah, I actually started looking into this, um, a lot more in the last couple of weeks after I was driving my car and was almost hit twice by an individual on an e-bike. So I started doing some research and looking into the instances of injuries, um, going up astronomically. Children, there are absolutely no regulations whatsoever on children. I was also almost hit by one on the walkway in Wild Dunes. I'm not sure if they're allowed to be on that walkway or not, but that's neither here nor there, kind of.
They're not.
But, and then also having ridden a bike very recently on front beach, just a regular bike, I can tell you I was probably going, you know, as slow as you can pretty much go on a bike and it was almost impossible. So I, and these, they can, they typically are sold to go between 25 and 30 miles an hour. However, you can very easily go on Google and find a way to hack them to make them go even faster. So I definitely, I, I think we, I actually think we need to look into restrictions for them, not just on the beach. But I really think we need to, to watch out on the beach. Also, if you add in the fact that if they're going with the wind, um, they could be going, I can't even imagine how fast. And they weigh between 50 and 80 pounds. Whereas a regular bike, you know, probably weighs 10 pounds.
They're a lot of fun, but they're gonna be dangerous on the beach.
And again, to Jimmy's point on the early one, we've got second reading coming up, you wanna make changes and edits? That's the time to do. That's the time to do it at council meeting.
Yeah, one question. You talked about the complaints have gone up some.
Yes.
So what have been the nature of those complaints? Have they been on the beach, on the street, both? And the type of complaints? Is it because they're simply there on the beach, or is it because they're actually interfering with a group on the beach, almost hitting them? Can you tell us a little more about that, chief?
Yes, sir. I've only heard of the recent complaint that was not on the beach, and that was the juveniles riding the electric bikes. But aside from that, the ones on the beach are typically called in because people are concerned about the speed at which they're being operated while there are children running towards the beach. And I would say, when we operate on the beach, our policy, even for emergency response with our ATVs and our side-by-sides, is that we go 15 miles an hour. We don't want to go faster than that on an ATV because I don't want to hurt somebody. And these bikes, we do have two e-bikes as well in the police department that we use, and they exceed that limit pretty easily on the beach. And that's where the complaints are coming in, just the speed during the times when there are kids that are running back and forth are the complaints I've taken.
Thanks. You have one final note, if I may. The thing about, we need to understand, the kids are running perpendicular to where the e-bikes are going. And as we all know, kids get excited, they're not really looking right and left, they don't see a street to cross, they see the beach, they see the water. And so they're not really paying attention to what's coming from their right or their left. I can see where that's a problem, don't you?
Yes, sir. That would certainly be the concern.
Yeah. Thank you.
Jan.
Just briefly, as a traffic engineer, motorized vehicles and pedestrians usually don't do well together, so we try to separate them out. And I think putting the motorized vehicles on the beach, if we can avoid it, is not a good idea, so.
Desiree, anything else from your
No, sir. I think if there are changes to the ordinance, they certainly can be considered at the second reading.
Chief, thank you, as always. Next item, discussion of 2022 final report of short-term rentals. In 2023, year-to-date, short-term rental license issued in your packet, you have a couple, a couple of sets of graphs, looking at the fiscal year of the licensing through the end of April, and then a snapshot of where things stand through June 9. So Douglas or Desiree, who wants to take that?
Yeah, I can go ahead and just kind of walk you through the final report. As you can tell at the top, this is a
Desiree, let's wait for just a second, get that on the screen for
It's Amy, it's page 33 through 36 of the packet.
Can I have the graph on the wall, or what?
Yes.
Yes.
That's not it.
All right, I'll go ahead before, while she puts it up in the screen, but it's page 33, 34, 35, and 36 of the meeting packet that's available on the city's website. So this is the final report for licensee year 2022. This covers the licenses that were issued by our building department from May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2023. Just as a reminder, the dwelling data that we have been using was provided by the county. We will get an updated set of data for 2023 in September when the county does a reassessment. So in terms of our baseline for dwelling information, we're using the same data set that we received from the county. We receive updated numbers, we'll adjust the analysis moving forward for 2023. As you can see, total short-term rental licenses that were issued in this licensee year were 1,805. 89% of those, 1,605, were issued to properties that are listed for tax purposes at 6%. And 11% or 200 were issued to full-time residents at properties that are taxed at the 4% rate. 39% total, when you look at the total number of licenses issued, divided by that, by the total dwelling units. So not, not much has changed from the last report that you had. We did increase the number of total short-term rental licenses from the last report provided by, at the workshop, and that is due to our enforcement efforts at ensuring that those properties that were identified as licensed, renting without a license, when they came to apply or renew for 2023, and we saw that they were actively renting in 2022, we had them pay for and obtain a 2022 license. So that's why that number's different, but 1,805 for 2022. The next two pages just show a distribution of the short-term rentals by gross revenue and separated by 4% and 6%. As you can see, about 80% of short-term rentals, including 4% and 6%, reported gross revenue of 100,000, 120,000 or less, and 43, 44% of those reported revenues of 52,000 or less for that licensee year. Just to make a point, at the bottom of the graph and the analysis on page 34, you can see the total reported gross revenue for licensee year 2022. We are doing an analysis tying that back to accommodation tax revenue, what was, what we should have received, what was reported. Maybe next month, we'll be able to, or by the council meeting, potentially, we can provide a more detailed report. We've done some high-level analysis so far, but still a little bit of work to do, to do on that end. Do you think
Can I ask a quick question on that, Desiree? Where else would we get the ATAX contributed revenue, just from the hotel rooms at the Sweetgrass and the Boardwalk, those 246 rooms?
That's right.
So that, other than those two sources, the short-term rental or those hotel rooms, that's our, that's our ATAX pool?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to confirm that.
Yes. All right. And then the second graph, page 35, is also related to licensee year 2022, and you can see the distribution there by type of dwelling. You can see 50% of those are single-family homes, and 43% are condo or specialty condo. And just for the, for the benefit of the public, specialty condo refers to the rooms for the Palms Hotel Seaside Inn. They operate somewhat like hotels, but they have a short-term rental license, they're privately owned. So we treat them, they behave very much like hotel rooms, we treat them separately. So that's what, that's what that category means. Are there any questions for 2022 before I go to 2023?
No, no, wait for 2023.
All right. So for 2023, again, just reminding you about the dwelling data, we're using the same numbers from 2022 from the county. When we get updated data, we'll, we'll make an adjustment there.
Yeah, and just for clarity, Amy, if you'll highlight the distribution, the box chart on the left, middle, that, that data's static
Correct.
To Desiree's comment, so we get that from the county September-ish?
Yes, sir.
Give or take, and we'll update that when we, when we have that.
You're talking about the 4440?
This right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the, or the distribution
The distribution, the distribution and the counts.
So that's static from the one you just looked at, Scott, until we get the
The updates.
New data from county in September.
Okay, and if we want to in the next iteration or some damn down the road, can we break those out a little bit further by any chance? Like when we have the 6%, the, I call them the second, I guess, I'm kind of with Mr. Santiago on the second homes, breaking out the second homes and then the ones that have rentals, and then even with the primary 4%, the 4% that are primaries and the 4% that have rentals. That way we can see a trend across going.
And I'd suggest we change it from investment to non-residents, so we're comparing resident dwellings with non-resident dwellings, which is comparable to the 4%, 6%.
The reason it's showing like that, that's how the county categorizes those properties, so that's, we were just trying to be consistent, but we can certainly make that adjustment. Okay, so for licensee year 2023, so that means licenses that were issued starting May 1, 2023, and that'll run till April 30 of 2024. The records and the numbers on the top right-hand side, when we look at the number of licenses issued, that's our record, so from the city's building department, licenses issued, same thing as 2022. And those are, these numbers reflect the licenses issued as of June 9, 2023. That shows 1633, 1,633 licenses issued so far in those two, two months, essentially.
One month, right?
It includes May, May 1 through
Up to June, six weeks.
Six weeks, yeah, I'm sorry. May 1 through June 9. And then on the bottom, you can see, so we've been, we want to be very consistent at showing licenses issued, so that we're comparing apples to apples. But I know that there is a lot of interest in knowing what's been, what's pending, what's, what's not yet issued. So we've included two categories here, I'm sorry, two categories here. Unlicensed rentals identified by Rentalscape, so these are the properties that the city's pursuing that show up as, you know, having active listings and not having a license. And then 56 that are in the queue. What that means is they've submitted some documentation, either our clerks are waiting for additional documentation from these applications, or they've been sent an invoice and they have not yet paid for that license.
So they may or may not turn into a license, but it's somewhere in the process.
It's somewhere in the process.
In these nine J's, after those, I'm assuming, at this point?
Not, not yet.
Not yet, got it. They've just been identified.
Yes.
Yeah, I think these two buckets are good just because it gives us a little bit of a forward indicator, because if they're in the queue, it's likely, I'm guessing, people aren't going to apply for a license if they're not intending to get it, it's just the process of trying to get all the paperwork in. So I think this gives us a little bit of a headlight for maybe what's coming down next month.
And the other thing that I wanted to point out is the pie chart on the bottom, that just is reflecting licenses issued. So if you assume that the 65, between the unlicensed rentals and those that are in the queue, become issued licenses, that distribution of what's now called investment properties with an IOP SDR goes from 33 to 34%. But just making sure that everybody understands that the pie chart just reflects the number of licenses issued, not the ones that are in the queue. So that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Yep, got one.
Yep.
So total dwelling units overall, 2022 was, percentage of short-term rental license, 39%. For 2023, it's 36%. Am I reading that correctly?
You are. You, so just keep in mind that the 39% reflects 12 months of issued licenses, and the 36 just reflects the six, five, six weeks.
Based on your experience, I mean, if we were to project, that 36% number is not going to, based on your experience of people coming in and getting licensed throughout the year, that's not going to be materially different at the end of the year.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know, I mean, it depends.
Do you have a whole lot of people coming in in July or in August getting short-term rental license?
Douglas oversees the building department, he has more direct experience with that, so I would rely on that. I think it's very difficult to make assumptions at this point, but
It's not assumption, it's just there's a lot of activity.
Can you take a stab at it?
I, I think Desiree is correct, that we really don't know what the trickle could be, 5 a month, it could be 25 a month, you know? And the difference between those two is obviously meaningful when you, when you push it out for the entire calendar year. So we, it's, it's just hard for us to predict that.
But I think we do have a reference point, though, right? We have a reference point from last year, right?
Yeah.
We went from about
Some July.
Yeah, we went from about 1,400 at the start to 1,800 at the end. So I mean, that's a, that's a rough number. We had a 400 increase during the course of the year.
A whole lot of cap more to worry, I'm conversation that
Yeah, a whole lot of discussion about it.
But I guess if you think, and if you're in the rental business, and I have a rental house, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to get a license for the whole year, for the most part. Majority of all in, who knows what's going to trickle before the year finishes out. So, Jan.
I was just going to say, I would like to see what it was for last year and then account for if it was 400 last year, even if it's 200. We cut it down to 200 this year, that still puts us in the 1,800-plus number that we have now. And could you look at last year and just figure out what percentage of your licenses came in in the first six, six weeks, as opposed, over the course of the year, to see what that is?
Yeah, I mean, some of it's going to be processing time and staff we had at the time.
Right.
Might have processed more last year, might not. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure that's an apples and apples, but I mean, they can certainly pull it.
And the housing market slowed down, so you might not have as much turnover or anything else this year, so who knows?
And if I remember correctly, there was a lot of discussion by city council about this, and some people, we don't know what that number is, it's not finite, went out and got a license last year, had never had one before because of what was being discussed.
I think you can see the number of, well, and again, you're comparing the 2022 numbers for 12 months. We had 200 4% licenses issued to properties taxed at 4%. That number has gone slightly down to 142, potentially 157, if the number of those that are pending actually result in a license. So that may be where you're seeing some of the folks that may have applied for a license, grabbed it last year and may not do so this year. But we just, it's too early to tell, really, you're comparing really one month for 12 months.
Anything concrete, I'm just looking for trends.
Rusty.
Yeah, thank you. I think this just reinforces what, that we do, what we said we would do as a council is to monitor this. That's what we voted to do, monitor going forward, make sure we have oversight month to month, and controls in place and personnel in place to look at these numbers. Instead of speculating what it may be, let's look at it actually, you know, month to month, and stay on top of it. I mean, the early report right here, to me, looks like that, you know, that we have less of a problem than some might have thought that we had, and that things look to be pretty stable overall. So I'm in favor of us, just as a council, continuing to do what we said we would do and voted to do.
Desiree, Douglas, other questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Good. Thank you all for graphing and doing all that. It'd be interesting to get the next set of county data and have that update, that'll be good information as well. Next item is environmental. We've already talked about item one. Item two, discussion of recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve proposal from Seaman and Whiteside for the development of a sea level rise adaptation plan. Douglas?
Yes. You'll recall that this was in your budget for this year. We're obviously at the tail end of that, that fiscal year, and we're just now getting to bringing this to you. But this has been a, a little bit of a process that the Planning Commission has taken on here recently. They developed an RFP packet. It went out, we had two respondents to that packet. The Planning Commission interviewed both respondents and graded those respondents. And their grades back from the Planning Commission were very close. They were within kind of 10% of each other from a grading standpoint. And the Planning Commission recommended that you all move forward with the lowest cost proposal. So after they did the interviews, we got proposals from both firms, and based on the Planning Commission's recommendation, that yielded a recommendation to engage Seaman and Whiteside. Seaman and Whiteside gave us a proposal for, I believe it's 30
35,300.
35,3. You will have 20,000 in the budget. I will say that there was, so that's obviously over budget. The other, the other respondent also gave, they gave a, they gave a proposal for what was in the, what was
The scope.
In the RFP, and their cost for that was about 50. They also came up with an alternate proposal that, where they scaled back the scope of the RFP to get it within the city's $20,000 budget. So there was kind of different ways of pricing it, and ultimately, if we take the Planning Commission's recommendation, it would be to engage Seaman and Whiteside at the amount over budget, but on, on the scope that was presented.
Ms. Wade?
First of all, I was a consultant for years and wrote a lot of proposals. I just want to say there are two things to consider when hiring professional consultants. We are not buying a Ford 150 where you go to the different lots, it's all ident We are not buying a Ford one-fifty where you go to the, the different lots, it's all identical material that you're getting. You just pick the one that's giving you the best price on the same truck. So when you're, when you're dealing with professional, um, firms, engineering, or engineering firms, architecture firms and things like that, you consider who has the expertise you want, the best qualified people to hire. Then you might consider, with this one, you might consider what they can do for the price. Um, and a lot of the ones I proposed for, they actually knew what the city, what the municipal budget is because it's public, and they would craft their, um, proposal to match that dollar amount. So going at it the way it was done is sort of unusual because they just went ahead and one of them sounds like gave you the, you know, the Cadillac, and the other one probably tried to get closer to the budget.
Well, just, just for clarity, um, the planning commission interviewed and graded both respondents based on their response to the, to the RFP. So they, they did, that is, that was part of the process, to choose the best respondent. But the scores were so close, they felt like the deciding factor should be the cost.
Okay.
But that was after a pretty exhaustive interview and review process of each of their proposals against the published scope.
And their qualifications.
And their qualifications, correct.
Good. Well, that's, that's the way I would hope it would be done. Good, thank you. Um, the second question, second part of this, then, just one more is, was the other firm a firm that has worked with us on, and has a history with the city or not?
Not, not directly. Um, the, they partner though with Stephen Trainum, um, who we obviously do have, um, experience with, who's here tonight. So part of the team, we did have, uh, a lot of direct contact with.
Okay.
The, um, Seaman and Whiteside, who, who is ultimately being recommended. Their team is made up of the same engineers that we have been using for the drainage master plan. So we do have a familiarity with, with that firm. So they, they definitely have, uh, knowledge of the island's topography and, and vulnerabilities and, uh, terrain.
Thank you. I'd like to, both of my questions, so I had one to answer.
Desiree.
So essentially, we have two options. We can either accept the proposal for thirty-five, three from Seaman and Whiteside, even though it's over budget by about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. Or we can go back and revise the scope to make it closer to the twenty thousand dollars that we have in the budget. That's the decision point that, that we need to make.
Yeah. I mean, I would go with the planning commission's recommendation. They vetted all this personally. Jimmy?
Yeah, just one quick note to follow up on Douglas, that we have extensive experience with Seaman and White, Whiteside.
Well, not really with Seaman and Whiteside, but with the engineers that they have fairly recently hired from Davis and Floyd.
Right, with the same personnel.
Same personnel.
Correct. So they're proven.
Yeah. One suggestion, you can always go back to them and, and ask them to, to sharpen their pencils one more time if that's, that's an issue. I don't think we're going to get close to twenty thousand, but they can always tell you what it is that, you know, to get a decent project.
Uh, the, the budget amount is being funded by the Beach Preservation Fee Fund, so there is, there are funds available, um, to cover the additional cost.
Well, we'll see in a minute. We've got budget overages too, that we'll, we can cover it from multiple places.
That's right.
All right. You good? Douglas?
Yes.
Um, public services update on RFP process to hire a parking vendor for the island for twenty-twenty-four beach season in your packet. Desiree had prepared a timeline, so Desiree, you want to?
Yeah, just very quickly, um, as I reported last month, we issued a request for proposals pretty quickly after the decision made by council that we pursue a procurement for these services. Um, the, uh, staff reached out to six, um, farms, management, uh, parking management farms, making sure that they were aware of the RFP. Um, the deadline for questions was this past Friday. We've received, uh, a, a lot of questions from four farms, which is a good sign. Um, we will host a mandatory pre-bid meeting, um, this Friday, and then two weeks from then, we will have the deadline for proposals. Uh, we have been requested by, I recall, one, maybe two, whether or not the city is going to extend the deadline for proposals, depending on how many questions there are. Um, at the pre-bid meeting, they might have to go back to and, and refine their proposals. Uh, we will make that determination on Friday. We do not think there is a need, but, you know, particularly having been given at least a month between advertising and, um, having the deadline for questions. But, um, I'll keep you all updated if, if we make, if we make that decision. So, um, once we've received proposals, we'll vet them and present them to the Public Safety Committee so we can go through the process and maybe call, um, um, a few of them to present to the committee or to the workshop, and we can have that conversation about the right path. But, um, we should be in good shape, um, from what I, from what I'm seeing so far.
Next item, thank you, Desiree. Next item, discussion of timeline with the Waterway Boulevard pedestrian path elevation project and options. Again, in your packet, uh, you've got a quick project summary and kind of, and a timeline and, and an update actually from, from squint the Public Services Committee. Matt, you recall this project has been discussed for a number of years. Um, we have funds in this year's budget to cover the project. We also have a FEMA, uh, grant request in, in the works. Um, so Desiree, you want to give us a quick update here?
Yes, uh, so the, the slide describes what the project is. We have been talking about making improvements to the pathway at Waterway Boulevard and as part of the work with master planning and, and, and talking about what can the city be doing to enhance our protection from tidal and, 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 um, improve our stormwater management. This came up as a project that was feasible and something that, that our engineers recommended that we pursue. To that effect, Thomas and Hutton was hired to do a very preliminary design and preliminary assessment. That is what we use to submit a grant for, from the state, ultimately funded by FEMA. They received thirty-two million dollars as part of the hazard mitigation grant program related to COVID-nineteen, um, monies from the CARES Act. Um, the state has, um, identified our project as a, as a top priority, which is really good. We are not competing with the entire, uh, nation. We are just competing with state project, which is something that was clarified to me when we had a meeting with the state folks last week. Um, the cost estimate of this project is a million one. This, this grant, if funded, would cover ninety percent of that, in addition to about fifty-four thousand dollars of, um, management costs that are not included in that, um, in that ninety percent. Really good news that the city, that the state has, um, designated this ca, this, this, um, project as a top priority. It's a fully expected to be funded. Obviously, the final decision comes from FEMA. Um, we are aware that, that our application, it's in the final stages of, of review from FEMA, because they have been requesting information of our engineers and our grant writer, which is a really good sign. What we have been told, it is highly unusual, that it, that there has to be something, uh, very dramatic that they find from the design or the cost that would, uh, prevent them from fully funding this project as requested. But obviously, we won't know that until the final grant allocations are announced at the, um, first quarter of twenty-twenty-four. Even though our application is in the final stages, FEMA will wait until they review all projects before making an announcement. Um, we have, um, we were able to adjust our application to include some pre-award costs of about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Um, one thirty-seven for engineering and twenty thousand for permitting, which means that we are able to move forward and engage and start working on those two specific, um, um, actions, those two, two specific, um, uh, work, uh, scopes of work, before being, uh, now, before the announcement and not lose any eligibility on, on the grant. The only difference is that we have to follow federal procurement guidelines before engaging an engineering firm to start that work. That means that we are not, just because Thomas and Hutton, uh, uh, has helped in the development of this process and, uh, prepared the preliminary design and feasibility study, we can't hire them as a sole source because they're, they're, um, they've been working with us. So we have to go through that process, which is something that we can do in the next week or two, uh, to get that ball rolling. But that would allow us to start working on this project and some of the soft costs before, um, being notified. The only caveat to that, and, and I think we fully expect if we are not successful in the grant for whatever reason, which is not expected, but could happen, that we are responsible for those costs. But as the mayor indicated, we've included the expenditure of this project in the budget. In the event that we're not successful, we have monies allocated to, to move forward.
Rusty.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, well, this is a lot more optimistic than what we heard at Public Services and Facilities.
This is new, new information.
New information.
Yeah, because, uh, you know, I won't go through all of it, but it looked like that there was going to be really a longer timeline in terms of permitting, and a lot of question as to whether we'd even get the FEMA grant or not. So this is very encouraging. I saw to say that, uh, the committee was unanimously in favor of, you know, bringing this to council and discussing it and seeing if we needed to do something different other than waiting for a FEMA grant. This looks pretty good here.
So the, just to clarify, the permitting process and the engineering process, I mean, those are long, those are long processes. We know, we've, we've seen with the drainage projects, over a year between us submitting for an application for a permit, um, and actually receiving permitting. What this means is rather than having to wait until, uh, May of next year before we know whether or not we're going to be funded, to then start the engineering and start the permitting, we can do that now. The permitting process, you know, who knows, could, could, could take a year.
We're just not having to start it next May.
Correct. We can start it now rather than start it next year.
I always call it pre-award money, like, really? Yeah, I really think it's going to happen. Kind of like really, really money.
Desiree, what, anything else?
Nothing else. We'll just pursue with, with, starting the procurement process for engineering and permitting. And, um, once we have that, we'll, it'll, it'll come before you all for approval.
Okay.
Very good.
Katie, do you have a question?
Excellent. No, I was-
Thumbs up.
Yep.
Got it. Next item, discussion of recommendation from the Public Services and Facilities Committee to approve proposal from Applied Technology Management for the engineering, design and permitting of Marina dredging project. And again, you've got that RFP re, response in your packet. Desiree, what else on?
I, I don't have the amount here, um, but it's a hundred, a hundred and five thousand. Yes, we procured this, only received one, one proposal. We did reach out to another company that we have used in the past for dredging. They're very busy and they, um, uh, sent me their regrets for not being able to submit a proposal, but I think we're in good hands with ATM. They have a long history with the city, a lot of experience with the marina, and I fully recommend that we, uh, move forward with this. The FY twenty-four budget includes fifty thousand dollars for this work, but as you all remember, we received a state grant allocation, a state allocation of a million five that will cover the entire cost of this project.
From, yeah, from the budget.
Correct. And there's no, those are not restricted to construction only. They could be used for engineering permitting and design as well. So this will become, come before you all for final approval at your council meeting.
Yeah. And again, this was, you heard from our lobbyists, this was good work on their part to get this in the budget. I think we've already drawn these funds down, right?
Yes, we have those, we have those funds, um, in, in the bank.
Next item, D Personnel, discussion of ordinance twenty-twenty-three oh nine to clarify position of city attorney and to include provisions for the appointment of city prosecutor. Uh, we've had pass, pass first reading last month, referred back to administration committee. John or Desiree, anything to update or?
I think this is to document what we actually do.
What we do.
Yeah, this essentially allows the city to, uh, it just clarifies that the city council has the ability to fi, to hire a, uh, either an individual as a city attorney or the firm, which is the direction we recently went to. The only addition here is a, um, we're codifying that it is city council's, um, appointment for the city prosecutor. That was not, um, included in the, in the ordinance, and we think it's important that it is, rather than some, uh, an attorney that is hired by the city administrator. So that, that is the, uh, other change that is included in that red line.
And we'll have second reading at council later this month.
Yes, sir.
Next item, other items under E. First one, discussion of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten to authorize the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement related to the South Carolina Local Revenue Services to participate in one or more local revenue service programs, to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements and other matters. We had first reading on this last month. We'll have second reading this month. Desiree, this is highly an administrative function, but anything else to add there?
It is.
A lot of words for an administrative word.
I mean, this is a very, you know, a little bit of cleanup from the municipal association. Uh, the city has participated in, with the municipal association for good Lord decades. Um, they will continue to collect these tax, um, insurance tax and the broker's tax and the telecommunications tax program on behalf of the city. They're just calling it a different, they're calling it different names. They are making this agreement, some sort of intergovernmental agreement. It's the same across the board, everybody who's participating in those programs. We should not see any changes in the operation of those programs. Um, they're just-
Or revenue.
Or revenue and any of that. I think they're just cleaning up their, the, the agreement, cleaning up the, um, agreements to make sure that they're consistent with the names, the new names for the program and, uh, consistent with the Business License Standardization Act. So, um, this, I mean, I can go into a little bit more detail. I don't think you want me to.
Fair enough.
Just in the title.
Right.
Thank you, Desiree. Next item, discussion and consideration of twenty-twenty-three surfing lessons, applications from Kai Dilling, Soul, Soul surfers. That's in your packet, I believe. Desiree, anything?
Yes, I believe-
I think this is the seventh?
Yes, I believe this is the seventh application you have received so far. Uh, Mr. Kai did receive an application for cer, uh, a permit last year. He wants to renew it. Um, I think there is a desire, maybe, uh, attempting to speed up the approval process to allow him to provide classes this month. That's the reason why it's listed on your agenda as consideration. So if it is the will of, of the council to suspend the rules and vote to approve this permit application tonight, rather than at the council meeting at the end of the month, that's certainly an option if you all vote and approve that.
Right, suspend the rule of order?
Second.
And, uh-
To allow the-
To allow discussion on this matter tonight.
To allow discussion and, and action?
Well, the discussion and action.
Okay.
Yes. Right.
Same. Second.
So we just need to have a vote, so.
Nicole, you've got a second.
Yeah, Ms. Myers.
Yep. Discussion, questions?
We have to vote on the motion, don't we?
Don't we discuss first?
Well, suspension of order.
Suspension of orders.
Oh, gotcha.
So all is in favor of suspending the rules of order?
Aye.
Opposed.
Go ahead, you're first.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I've spoken to Kai and he's very apologetic. He thought that he had done everything that he was supposed to do and he hadn't. Um, and he is willing to, um, I know there's been discussions about having, you know, making sure it's not too crowded in one area. He's willing to pretty much do anything that we want, um, if he can get this done tonight, so he can start doing lessons like tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, Kai's very well-known on the island. He's been teaching kids surfing lessons for a long, long, long time. And he's, he's got all of the proper paperwork and qualifications and things that he needs.
Yeah, and I would-
But everybody knows Kai. Go ahead, that's it.
Uh, just a couple of comments from my side. I mean, I don't, I, and I don't think any of us want to get in the habit of having votes at a workshop. That's not the intent or the purpose, and we're talking about two weeks. My real concern with this one is this person had a couple of conversations with staff, didn't like the answers, and have come to council to expedite this. Somebody going around our staff does not make me feel very good at all for doing business with somebody, to be quite honest with you. I could care less who teaches on our island. I don't care if there's ten of them, you know, we, I think we need to, do need to talk next year about, you know, do we want to limit the number potentially? Do we want to designate an area of the island or whatever we want to do? But, um, that's, that's a next year conversation. And again, I, I'm glad we're doing surf lessons. I'm, it's great. I just have a real concern with somebody that goes around our staff like that. But if we, if the will of council wants to vote it tonight, great.
Mayor, can I?
Can I respond? I'd like, I mean, I feel like I need to respond to that though. I mean, I, I guess maybe staff should too. But, I mean, from my conversations with him, it, it's, it's an ordinance that requires a vote. So he was just reaching out to me as a council person to ask if there was any way that we could vote on this. So, I mean, that's-
After he'd been told the path and the other six knew the path. After he'd been told the path and the other six knew the path.
But he made a mistake and it was an honest mistake, but I mean, it's not like he was going, he was, he was following the procedure that the ordinance calls for and the ordinance requires a vote.
It does that. It doesn't call for people to go around our staff to come to council to solve an administrative issue, is my point.
But staff can't allow, staff can't vote.
Correct.
I think next year, we have talked about setting up a deadline for all applications to be submitted at the same time. And we'll make sure that we communicate that to everybody who's received a permit in the past. And at that time, you can consider all applications at one time. If there are any concerns about location, we can, we can kind of handle that at the same, at the same time. Much, it would be much easier from an administrative perspective of receiving these applications. So I'm hopeful that that change, certainly, we'll, we'll propose that we change that for next year.
Yeah. And Katie, you're right, they can't make a determination, but again, the conversation was had that you have to wait till council meeting to have a vote because we don't vote at workshops. I mean, again, not that big a deal. It just concerns me when people go around.
I think it is a big deal, though, from the standpoint of, I'm not talking about going around the system as much as I am. I'm concerned because we set these workshops up to have workshops, not to have another council meeting. And I don't want to set a precedent that we start getting into saying a lot of exceptions here where we start voting on issues that then de facto becomes a second council meeting for the month. That's not the way these things were intended. They were intended to work through issues and then bring them to council. So, I mean, we've already gone through that. I think we voted and said we can consider it, but I, it concerns me that we start using workshops as a place that we start voting and, like I said, becomes a de facto second council meeting of the month.
Yeah, I share the same concerns that Councilmember Begosian does in regards to setting a precedent here. In a workshop where we've stated we would not be taking votes and making votes, and we don't need to start a, or set a new precedent where we're doing that routinely. I also have the same concerns that the mayor did in that I clearly saw the communication that went to the, to the person here making the request, and there was a process to follow. And, you know, that would be decided at this month's council meeting on the 26th, 27th, whenever it is. And it's, to go around that process after he had been instructed that that's the way to go, to me, just not, just not smack of being straight up with us. I basically can't support it for that reason, quite honestly, when we get down to it because I would rather us make a council, make a vote at council in regards to this matter. And I know, I know this gentleman here has done business on this island for many years. I've lived here for 40 years. I know of him very well and watched him before when he operated on Isle of Palms and did a great job for many, many years. So it's nothing personal, it's just, I think we should follow the rules that we have in place.
So you can make, you can make a, any council can request a special meeting. There's a procedure to do that. I had, I thought that we could avoid the necessity of that headache of bringing everyone here another day. And we are all here, so, I mean, I believe it takes, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it takes a vote of six to request a special meeting, is that correct?
Five.
Or is it still just five?
Five, yes, ma'am.
So if five people are in favor of it and we're sitting here today, the fact that I thought it would be nicer to do it when everyone is here rather than tomorrow or last week, which actually would have been helpful, I feel like we're making a mountain out of a molehill here.
Yep, I totally agree.
Katie?
I have a question. Didn't you recall a special meeting before the workshop?
For executive session.
But we had to go into, go into a special meeting first to then go into executive session. And I just, I suggested that we could bring it up then because I was definitely not in favor of having a special council meeting just for this person who had missed a deadline. But I thought that would have been a way to, at least, he would have been penalized with not being able to work for two weeks, but still have that. I just don't understand. But I also don't understand the background of this. It sounds like there's a lot that I wasn't aware of in terms of the person that was making the application.
I was just making the comment. You saw the email traffic. If you want to make a motion, we'll take it up.
Can I just add one? Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Before we do that?
Yes.
Is there another way to accommodate this situation? I mean, it sounds to me like this guy's been here for quite some time. We're at our seventh surfing and I, it is, it is a bit of a mountain over a molehill. If everybody is accommodating to, you know, have him do his business on the, on the beach, is there another way than disrupting the meeting?
We've got, we've got suspension of rules of order. I would say make a motion and let's go for it.
Because it has, it has to be voted on, so we, yes, we could have had a meeting at four.
We need a motion.
Just make a motion and we'll go with it.
The most efficient, we, I thought this would be more efficient, so I apologize.
Make a motion and we'll go with it.
Motion to approve the surfing lessons.
Second?
Any other discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're good.
Just council restriemen voted against it. Thank you.
Next item is financial review. Debbie.
Lovello.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rusty, already had to check. Discussion of Lovello on June 22nd. Desiree sent an email today, I think, or yesterday with the information.
Yesterday.
For that, yesterday. So Rusty, you want to?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Well, as I'm sure all of you know, we do have the Lovello event that takes place on the island here in November. And, you know, we have the finishing area for Lovello and it's a combination of, you know, different length bicycle rides and it's all for the benefit of the Hollings Cancer Center. And it's a great event, it's well-attended. Last year, we had great weather. We had excellent, excellent participation from the rec center, from our safety department, Desiree, the whole group and along with Lovello had just had a good finish to the event. Well.
Year before, whether or not.
The year before, we were, it was a rainout, but we still had pretty decent participation in spite of that, and they limited the ride to only 10 miles long instead of having the century ride, 100 miles and the 50 mile as well. But all that to say is I just wanted to pass along to the rest of council that they do have a new event that they've planned this year, and it's next Thursday, June 22nd, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Harbor Club at West Edge. And it's basically, you know, complimentary orders and cocktails, but more importantly, it's, it's an opportunity for you all to learn more about what the Hollings Cancer Center does, what Lovello does, and to also just learn more about the event. So we wanted to extend an invitation to all of the council members and being on their executive board, I told them I would pass that along to all of you. And any of you that are interested, please feel free to be there for that. It's from 5:30 to 7:30 on June 22nd. And if you also have other friends, family, or colleagues that might be interested in attending, just let me know and I'm sure we can work them in also. So it's for a great cause, a great event, and I would just encourage you to try to get out there and attend this. Thanks.
Debbie, financial review in our packet. This is through May, so one more month left in our fiscal year.
You're almost there.
Hard to believe, yeah.
Nothing major out of the ordinary to talk about. General fund revenues are at 96% of the budget and total fund revenues are 90% of the budget. The target for 11 months into the fiscal year would be 92%, so general fund is trending ahead of budget. On the expenditure side, the general fund is at 92%, so right on target. Total, all funds is at 75%. So we will not spend as much money on the expenditure side as the budget predicted. The biggest, the biggest difference is Drainage Phase III, which has been rebudgeted into FY24. And then there are some other smaller projects that either came in under budget or we would have moved them into FY24. General fund revenues, drilling down into those, you can see that property taxes, business licenses, rental licenses, and building permits are already over budget 11 months into the fiscal year. Currently, the forecast is that we'll beat the revenue budget in the general fund by about $2 million. On the expenditure side in the general fund, still predicting that we'll be over budget around $800,000, but that might be a little too conservative. I think when all is said and done, we'll probably be more like $600,000 over budget. But all funds will bring in more revenue than they have expenditures, so we should see a buildup of all fund balances. So that's good news. Cash balances, the city has about $39 million in cash. 37 million of that is at the LGIP and the interest rate for May was 5.27%, so we're getting some good interest income.
Wow. Oh, excuse me.
I know, it makes me excited.
Two million a year, rough numbers in interest income.
5%, 5.2.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty strong.
Let's see. In June, so this month, the city made the final principal and interest payment on the rec bond issued in 2003.
Right.
We should have had a mortgage burning, but we didn't. The debt service mileage, as y'all know, will go down in September to reflect that debt coming off the city's books.
And Debbie, I think it was 1 mil, if I remember right.
Mm-hmm. I think that's right.
Yep.
Every little bit helps.
It's in the right direction.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
Every little bit helps, yeah.
Also of note, I wanted to mention that the Marina Restaurant has now been operating for a full year. The lease requires, y'all might recall this, a statement from a CPA confirming gross revenue. The tenant has submitted a proposed list of agreed-upon procedures that their CPA would perform to meet this requirement. The staff has shared the proposal with our CPA, which is Varus, and with Brian Kitz to get their opinion. They feel that what the tenant is proposing is adequate and the staff agrees, but we want to get off on the right foot, so we would like city council to bless that proposal. So we will prepare something to include in the council packet to let y'all see that at the council meeting and get your vote, yea or nay.
And the reason we're doing this is the report that we would get from them does not include a specific language that the lease includes. Remember, the lease was written by a real estate attorney, not a CPA firm. So I just want to make sure that under my purview, we are enforcing these leases to the T. And I just want to get buy-in from council that this document and this report that they're, that they're providing to the city to meet that lease requirement is acceptable to the city and will be acceptable for the entire length of the lease. So we'll be providing that and just as an FYI, those financials are protected from public distribution, so we will make sure that we share whatever we can in terms of the procedures that they're proposing and get a blessing from council that that is acceptable.
Can I have, ask a couple of quick questions? At this time, do you know if tax return, tax returns will be included in these agreed-upon procedures or that income tax return or sales tax returns?
So we, they, they submit a copy of their ST 3T every month.
Okay.
So this would just be some agreed-upon procedures to confirm those numbers.
Right, and that's just grocery receipts. I mean, net of sales tax, of course.
That's right.
And hospitality tax and, you know, liquor by the drink taxing, the 14%, whatever. Well, I'm glad to see we're doing this. We had problems in the past down there and we all remember, you know, previous tenant which just could never, could never quite nail it down. So I'm really glad to hear this. Good job.
All right, moving on to tourism revenues. I'm just going to talk about a couple because there hasn't been much activity on the non-monthly pages. But municipal accommodations fee, the April number is low. You can see $24,000 compared to 82 in the prior year. Reaching out to the county, the comment I got back was that the county was overwhelmed in the month with business licenses. They have the same now state mandated due date as the city has, and we know how busy we've been. So they were overwhelmed with business licenses and they said also a lot of rentals, accommodation taxpayers are switching their management companies for some reason. So those are the two reasons they listed, and they said our next check for next month will be $467,000. So half of that would be 233, which would be more in line with the trends we've been seeing.
Yeah.
So if you add that in, we'd be at 8% increase over FY21, which lines up pretty good with the next page, the state A tax 9% increase.
Yeah.
And those are slightly different time periods, but still you can see that kind of equivalent trend. No new county A tax money, hospitality tax, another strong month in April, well, for May, April consumption. So we're 20% ahead of the prior year in hospitality tax after being 57% ahead of the prior year. So lots of eating and drinking.
Eating and drinking. Can't get rid of tequila then, can you?
Beach preservation fee, we've already talked about. Local option sales tax, strong month, 10% ahead. We still have three months, three big months to collect in this fiscal year. There were no, there was no activity on the project worksheet, so we haven't, we do not have those. So I'm done.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie, very much. Next item, procurement. First is approval of purchase of 16 ballistic vests for fire department personnel in an amount not to exceed $28,000 to be funded by the $150,000 approved allocation to enhance emergency response and beach safety.
So, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. So yes, so this is something that we discussed with the Public Safety Committee meeting, the special meeting that we held after the shooting that we had at the beach, and this was one, another recommendation that was shared there, was not included in the final list that you all saw when $150,000 was approved by council, but it was part of the same conversation of what we can do to enhance safety and beach safety and certainly protect, protect our personnel. This is being recommended by the fire department. I support this purchase. It would be funded by the, by the allocation that's already been approved, but because of the amount, it requires an approval from, from city council, so this will be included at the city council meeting for action as well.
Why 16, the number 16?
One, so it's one per person on a shift and including some administrative staff, like the fire chief, the battalion chief are training. So it won't be one per person, it's one per position, if you will.
Very good.
Next item is approval of purchase of four tide valves for Merritt Boulevard, two there, one on Driftwood Lane and one on Carolina Boulevard in an amount of $35,520 to be funded by the Drainage Contingency Fund, which I think has over $300,000 in it, rough numbers. This is, these are some real hotspot areas. As some of you may know, if you've had email traffic or live in these areas, so we're just using some of our contingency funds to put in a valve like we did at 25th. That'll hopefully alleviate merits of, Driftwood, to match, Merritt's probably the worst of all the three of these, but this will be a good add for us, so.
Yes, and this is being proposed as a sole source contract, included in your packet as a memo making that justification. Essentially, there's only two manufacturers that do that, those types of valves, and this particular one produces one that is much easier to maintain, can be removed, cleaned out, and put back in. So that's why we're recommending that we, that we approve, that city council approves this, this purchase. Again, final vote will come to the city council meeting for action.
That seems like, seems like great price. Is that?
For something that's going.
I'm afraid to say that out loud.
Well, they're about $8,000 each.
Four of them, yeah. And are we, Robert, or somebody, are they on hand, have we got supply chain issues, or any idea?
I was told that it's down in Florida, so about five to 10 days.
Okay.
Cool.
Nice, that'll be a big pickup for those residents in that area, for sure, in those areas.
Yep.
Sorry, Desiree, anything else on that one?
No, sir.
You're good. Capital Projects update, there's not a whole lot of updates there, you've got the report in your packet, Desiree, you okay if we bypass you?
You know, maybe, no, kidding. If anybody has any questions, let me know, not a whole lot of activity. The only thing that I do want to highlight is that the public dock in the Marina, the public dock permit ended the public comment period, no major comments received, which is a good thing, that means that OCR will likely approve the 16-foot wide dock for, for that area, so ATM is full steam ahead, finalizing design, so that we can go off a bit.
Awesome, that's great. Early legislative report, John, to your comment earlier about the budget and kind of some of the shenanigans in Columbia that went on there, we do have about a million and a half, million for drainage, half a million for some ADA boardwalks that are in this year, that are still in the budget, subject to governor veto, those numbers are so small, I can't even imagine they would raise to the level, so hopefully we'll get good news on that here in the next few weeks or so. No further business?
Rusty's turn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, off record at 7:32.
Good job, Rusty.